Let's lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Roll call please.
Eisner. Savage.
Here.
Brochus.
Here.
Barnhart.
Here.
Martina.
Here.
Uh, there are a few additions to the agenda. First, um, adding to the agenda of all stone economic zoning ordinance uh, for the Shepherd Hospital and also the resignation of Councilwoman Martina and the appointment of a new city treasurer. Do I have a second to add them to the agenda?
Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Eisner.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes. At this time, I will have a meeting, uh, go to recess and turn it over. Am I doing that wrong, Jamie?
You don't need to recess.
Never mind, minus that recess. Just turning it over to Jamie.
This is all gonna happen for me, regular meeting.
Alright, although.
Alright, so first on the agenda, we have the 2024 professional services agreement with CDPC. So this is for your 2024 CDPG grant, which has just finally been awarded and contracted. The amount is $50,000. That has not changed. It's the same scope that we presented last year around this time when we started on your application for 2024. Um, same services we do every year. I'm glad to take any questions or comments regarding our PSA and ask that you take action to approve it.
Questions, anyone?
When you come, I have you do an excellent job.
Thank you.
You are.
Can we just do that right now?
Absolutely.
Alright, so I will make the motions for the 2025 CDPG scope of service.
Oh, that's the 2024.
Oh, sorry. I'm ahead. 2024. Do I have a second?
Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina, yes. Eisner.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Okay, much like last year, I also have the 2025 scope of services. Just for your information, this evening, this kind of year, when we get started on application prep, we like to bring this before you. Again, the cost is still the same as last year and previous years recently. Um, same scope of services. We'll be getting started on our hearings pretty directly. I don't remember when we're starting, but I think July. We'll get the process started with the first public hearing. Get your 2025 stuff rolling. We do not have allocations yet. Hopefully soon. So I'm not sure yet exactly when applications will be due. They're usually due at the end of October. But this is just for your consideration. Again, I would gladly take any questions on it. And next year, at this time, we'll be here to have this one adopted as an actual.
Questions, anyone?
No concerns anything about CDPC services. Everything very good.
Excellent.
Alright, the final thing I have on the agenda is a standard thing we do about every five years is the adoption of some master files for your CDPG program. So there's basically one resolution to adopt all of them. I'm just gonna speak really briefly about each of them. So the first one is the agent resolution. That basically gives CDPC the authority to submit things to the CDO their behalf, so we don't have to come to you to sign every little piece of paper. So that's one we do that we send along. We do things like revision, modifications, reporting to the CDO those who haven't approved that. The citizen participation plan, there are no changes. It's just last adopted in 2020. So while we're doing this with some other plans, if you figure the United States will get the citizen participation plan re-adopted, it is the one that states that we require hearings that we need to have and how we're gonna handle comments and then all of those things that come along with the citizen participation requirements of CDPG. The code of conduct, again, is just a master file we are required to have in the CDPG file. Basically, it's just stating, you know, a statement about any official having personal interest in a case or in a project that would be, you know, looked at by the solicitor closely to make sure we're not violating any code of conduct. So rights, nothing has changed here. Again, it just needs to be re-adopted because of timing. Integrity policy, same thing. This basically speaks to how things will be handled when it comes to ethics and employees, agents, affiliates, and any sort of fortuities or um, financial interests in projects. And then disclosure of information. Again, another document that is required to have. Your language access plan, this one we needed re-adopted basically because there are new um percentages for limited English proficiency populations based on the new census data. You are still below 85%, so therefore we do not need to have an actual language access plan in place. But this does speak to what we would do if somebody does need information in other languages. And then the one that did change some is the procurement policy. So in this one, it's basically the same, but at the end, we did add the um conflict of interest provision and the whistleblower protections. So specifically with the whistleblower protections, we did wanna make sure that you did see that that was added, that there are now protections in this particular plan and the new thresholds of January are in this plan as well. And we can take action on this plan re-adoption resolution and have you cover all of them.
Alright, any?
Even though you still have to sign all of them, it's alright.
Any questions for Jamie on that one? Alright, so I will make the motion to accept the uh re-adoption of the policy. Do I have a second?
Excuse me.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Eisner. Brochus.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, at this time, is there any comments on agenda items at this time? Any comments on agenda items at this time? Alrighty, uh, moving on to updates. I just have one quick one on the whole treasure situation. So we were accepting letters at four o'clock today. Um, that's at this time when we had one letter of interest that came from Councilwoman Martina. So we, we called solicitor Marie to see if we could appoint her tonight because she was the only one. He did say we could do that. So um, just for transparency sake, at the end of our voting items, that's when we will accept her resignation from city council. Then that's one vote. Then to appoint her, it will be another vote. And at that time, we'll be obviously advertising for letters of interest for the vacant council position. So I just wanna give an update on that. Now moving on to other updates. Kurt, Sweet.
There, just that way you can be able to follow along too. It's pretty long today. Alright, so just so you're aware, this year's pretty good for the Sweet program. We've awarded two grants this year. One from the Charles D. Daganstein Foundation for $3,000, which the city already has. And then we were notified that we approved for the Sundar Northumberland Community Trust and the S. Luther Savage Trust for $3,500 this year. We're still waiting for the confirmation letter from that one. So far, yesterday was our most recent volunteer date with all the kids out at the park. So far this year, we've gained 234 hours of service from our volunteers and 73 volunteers came up to the program so far. And out of the 73, 40 have been students. Alright, so the next, um, these are our safety recommendations from the Sweet Committee based off of what we're hearing from the local community, the residents, visitors, and other programs or organizations actually using the park in its current state. So I'm just gonna go through my list here. Currently, there are no signs on Line Street from Sixth and Eighth Street in either direction of the State Field till their drivers that children may be present in the area. Although there is no designated crosswalk at the park or a sidewalk along the hill on Line Street, children are often seen crossing the road and walking along the street to reach the top of the hill. The area experiences significant foot traffic from children due to the nearby Goodwill Playground, the Sweet Project, and seasonal sledding activities that occur on the hill during winter. We request that the city installs some kind of children at play or other um street signage on both directions, on top of Hill and below the hill, to notify drivers that there are kids in the area. And I do note from past occurrences here at the meeting, multiple residents have also requested this during meetings in the same area. So I really hope that the city can get on this and look at this. Um, the next one's gonna be, we request that yellow curb markings be added to both sides of the parking lot entrance on North Sixth Street to help ensure that our vehicles and visitors have had a good space to enter and exit the parking lot, that we have safe, the parking spaces on the street for the actual residents there. Uh, there have been recurring issues because there's no markings on the new curbs that we've put in there from the construction over the years, that people are just parking in the block in the entrance to the actual parking lot. Next one's gonna be, um, the blue striping has faded away from the handicap parking portion on the parking lot itself. So we're asking that the blue striping for the designated handicap parking space, including the van accessory, be repainted there on the cement pavements at the park. Uh, fourth, the fourth one here, we're requesting that a crosswalk marking be added to the designated trail crossing on Race Street to enhance the pedestrian's safety. This is the crossing that you just added on this phase of the construction. Uh, it's a vital connection for our children visiting the park from the Daganstein Library and also Quebec Elementary School with that trail that runs beyond the school. Okay, so we're asking that a crosswalk mark is be added on the road there. And the same thing, add some kind of safety, children at play, some kind of signage that the drivers know there's a crosswalk here, mid-block, and there are children in the area. So whatever's within the regulations, we would like the Sweet Department to be looking at this. Alright, fifth one. We, we have received some complaints since the new trails have been opening up with the gravel on it, that someone's going through there with a small motorized bike, like dirt bike or something. Alright, so I have requested this at least through the last year or two years, the Sweet Department to try to get us some kind of no motorized vehicle signs. We need three signs that inform people motorized vehicles and equipment are not allowed past this point. Would like each sign be posted at the entrance of all three trinkets. So one in the gravel parking lot, one on Race Street, and then one at the Line Street entrance. That way, if we do get pictures of something, or repeat our great PD here, they can actually help us out here because the people will know what the instructions are. We're finding out that we're having issues now because the people who are not involved with the project or with our stewardship program, they're not really aware of what is occurring there. We don't really have any visual signs. There's no instructional signs there informing people like what we can and cannot do there yet. We do have these signs for the instructions which we got throughout the years. We're just waiting for the construction to be completed so that then we can put all of our signs up. And hopefully by that time, they'll help them with some of the issues that we're seeing because people will then be able to see, yes, something's actually happening here and know we cannot do this. Another small thing that we're noticing, someone went through with a hatchet, um, damaged a couple of their trees that were pretty healthy. They tore the bark all the way off, like higher than they. So they just went to town, started carving on them. So instead of leaving it there and being a billboard, hey, continue doing this, our volunteers went through yesterday and cut them down. So that's another issue. Alright, next one is, uh, we, we would like the entire park gravel parking area. There is dirt. If you're looking at the gravel parking area, there's dirt and green vegetation. It's just all grown there because all the rocks have smushed down. It has not been really well maintained over the years because it has been an ongoing project. But once this construction is done, we're hoping that the city can get in there, clean up this gravel parking lot, the same as all of our other city gravel parking lots in the area. Get the crushed gravel in there, flatten it down, scrape all that dirt and vegetation off because it's becoming a nuisance with maintenance. Um, it's overgrown. Our volunteers working on yesterday, we back in that parking lot. There's no reason we should be back at parking lots anymore, especially if we're not going for any other parking lots in the city. So we ask the Sweet Department to come through and make sure that this is taken care of when construction is done. Especially with all these other organizations using it. Um, even though it is, can process the construction, but we're seeing online activity. People reaching out to me via email, phone calls, like, you know, that their organization are using it. I know, I think the library was the most recent one. They host a kind of bird species education, of course, um, at the park for the kids. So that was great to see. So yesterday, our volunteers were super busy trying to help out the Sweet Department with all the new construction. So on both sides of the trail of, um, both sides of the new trail where the grass is grown, we had volunteers out there picking the big rocks out. That way, there's no debris in the way of the mower system. So there shouldn't be any excuse that they can't be taking the mowers through. Alright, so I don't, there has been zero communication this year regarding Phase Two construction and the Sweet Committee. We're not receiving updates. We're not receiving invitations to any of the construction meetings to make sure what the community, what it does, what it provides. For instance, I don't know who approved it or asked for it, but the construction workers threw grass seed on both sides of the hillside trail. Now that's extra maintenance. It's a hill, okay? It's a real steep hill there that you can criminalize it through, you cut through with the trails. So now with the rain, the rain came through, washed all the seeds. So now our new trail is around growing grass. There's no reason to have grass on the hillside where there was zero grass before the construction. Now it's extra maintenance. Our volunteers do not wanna cover that because we did not ask for grass seed plant. So I don't know how the city wants to take care of that, but they're gonna probably have to spray that new trail that they just built. Alright, we are currently, your Sweet Department is cutting the center trail and then one, and then the old, um, the gravel maintenance that was done a couple of years ago. So now, once with all this construction occurring and everything turning new, we do are asking for group team maintenance to be added for the embankment trail. It's only one strip of grass that we're asking to cut on the, on each side of the trails. Um, this way it helps the vegetation not to grow onto the trail, cause more of a maintenance issue, eroding the trail system, as well as we have snakes, turtles, and other kinds of critters. So keeping one path of, um, cutting path, like the length, width of the lower, it'll help us out, keep all of our visitors safe. Just for instance, I was just out there a couple of days ago, I got three, four foot long garden snake crossed my path on the trail. So if we can keep the brush cut back on both sides of the trail, it'll definitely help everybody out that doesn't know these critters are actually on the property. So we definitely want the one side where it's only grass on the gravel embankment. The next one's gonna be both sides of the trail that goes through the middle. And then the hillside trail, I don't know what you're gonna wanna do about that because you can't take the mowers through there because it is a hill. So your guys are gonna have to get through the weed rocker, or they're gonna have to kill the grass that they planted. Um, so I don't know how you're gonna wanna deal with that one. And then the Line Street entrance, they cut a lot of grass. It's nice and clean. But we're gonna, we would like to make sure that your guys, when they're going out there cutting the trails, that they're also keeping that Line Street entrance clear as well.
And maintenance on that.
Yeah. And then the drainage, um, where the water from the wetland actually drains into the city system on Sixth Street, it's kind of been ignored a little bit this year. So our volunteers went through there yesterday and we backed and cleared out the gutter where it all drains into our system. We definitely would like the city to keep track of that because once that brush starts growing in that, it clogs up the piping for what the water draining on the system, which then causes the overall water level of wetland to raise, and which then causes water issues at the local residents' homes and their basements. So we definitely wanna keep that drain clear. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, gee. Rules for the park. The running rules for the park.
It would be the same as any other city park. We do have, like, in the rules sign, um, they're at my home and just some storage waiting. It would be no different than what we have over at, like, um, the skate park or Front Street. No motorized vehicles, box only.
You have something.
I, I, we, I believe we have two instructional signs where it's like the rules of the park. So how would legal complicate it for that if it was posted?
Well, right now, under construction, we don't want any signs up because of the construction. And Kurt, going back to the paintings of work, Mr. Martin and I talked a month ago. And, uh, we've been talking since then. We would send notifications over. All the painting will be done after they're done. Uh, of course, the grass, we haven't been in there because of this, we're wet. Now they're just drying up in there the last couple of days, last week. And Steve's off, he's off vacation. Be back Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday. So I'll mention it too about that earlier you just talked about. Yes, we'll spray the trails that have grass seed. We'll just spray it before that all gets easy fix. And the signings will be done. When we're all done, pick up the locations and so forth.
Okay.
Things look tore up because it is tore up right now. We haven't had a meeting for a while because they haven't been working because of all the rain. Contractor, Mr. Martin, he's the gentleman to rebuild the pavilion. I talked to him a month ago, and of course, he was ready for the rain to stop. And then the port first, two weeks ago, he was doing the rain. And that's why I asked, was it in the day? I'm gonna go up there tomorrow and see how we're making out. But once they get the block laid up, they backfill, then they can start building pavilion itself.
Yeah, we're not expecting you all to, like, make this on top of your list of priorities right now because we know all this construction going through, things getting ruined. We're just trying to keep this line of communication open. I'm the middle person between the city and the community that's involved with the project. So I wanna make sure that everybody's on the same level of what, knowing what's happening and that the city's aware of what our expectations are for safety of the overall.
What are your town cams?
Yeah, so that's, that's a big hot topic. Everybody's recommending us to get trail cams. So the second grant that we're waiting for the funding, so once we get that letter, if you can forward that to me, please, Eric.
It's Thursday.
Yeah. We're gonna use a portion of that grant money to pick up some trail cams because that falls in line with what we're gonna apply for for that project.
And I'll keep you informed. There hasn't been any meetings like I just mentioned because of the fact that the jobs are just said with all the rain.
Yeah, but, but even with, if there's no meetings going on, then that's an issue if you got a quarter million dollars being spent on construction for our project.
But what I meant was, we'd invite you to a meeting. We didn't have anything yet. See what I'm saying?
Sure. I, I would also, so you said it's motorized vehicles going.
They, they called it a dirt bike before we were there. They're not sure. They just heard the noise.
I heard, I heard it as well before we were there. So maybe, uh, Captain Ice, you may be able to get something that, with a sign that we can do at some other time, but at least have something there to cover the city. Um, because if they're back there tearing things up, if somebody's walking on that path and they get hit by one of these four-wheelers, we're, we're in law.
I'll talk to Stephen because I may even make a temporary post, um, whatever foundation. Set it here, set it there. Working out to get back. And then, uh, Kurt, we have all time meetings Thursday. And if I get an update, I'll forward that information to you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Now, do you want to go Thursday or are you in the area?
I, I should, should be in the area.
Okay, I'll find what the agenda is and see what's gonna be about a new vehicle. If, if you're gonna have something that's gonna be beneficial to you.
Yeah.
Alright, and then also, Kurt, just one other thing. Do you have that open? When the park's gonna be open, be closed? Like, is it closed at nine?
Oh yeah, it would be just like the, alright, we're city parks. Was it a bond? The dust is open.
And my thing would be is to get something like that posted because that then allows for the officers basically going to neighbor us if, if they're, if they're in there. Because as well as you know, we've had two different accidents down there. Um, and what they've done to the park is a great thing, but you have some people just, you don't wanna respect anything. So if we would have those signs up showing that it's closed to motorized vehicles, also the, you know, once open, closed to people, to the citizens, that would also help us with the trespassing as well.
And I believe that's all on those, on the instructional signs or the park rules that I have in my basement.
Just long to get some.
I mean, I, but it'd be something temporary, like I said. It would definitely all help out.
And you sit on camera? Do you have a camera system?
We do not. Uh, we were using one of volunteers' trail cams the last few years, just to kinda see what was going on. Um, but we weren't able to use it this year. So now we're looking at using a portion of our funding once the city gets it to pick up maybe one or two trail cams.
Do you have any cameras on to overcome the city's whole project? Have to check and change. I don't know what's.
We do. Well, even if you can add the, the Sweet Park to your overall city camera project that you're working on, that would, that would be perfect. Yeah. Because this isn't, this is abnormal for all of our other city parks because it's not on your main street. Your, your regular people weren't seeing it all the time. The people that are seeing it all the time are the people who are living on the blocks surrounding the OX property because it is on the house. Um, it's, it's not on your primary roads in town. So that's the only thing that makes it a little bit more of an issue for people thinking they can do whatever they want there. But if we can get some instructions there and people know, like, no, you can't do this, I think it'll be fine.
Thank Kurt.
Alright, that's great. Great problem. I'm just gonna do it easy. Yeah.
Does anyone have any, does anyone have any questions for Kurt? Alright, thanks, Kurt. Uh, Light Fest, Victoria?
Hi. Um, alright, well, it's that time of year, you know, only six months starting next week until Christmas. So, uh, but one of the things that you are going to see is, um, several years ago, we did get a grant for the lighting on Market Street and Front Street, which was the light lights. Um, I'm not very pleased with how that looks. It makes our city look very dark. Um, didn't, didn't look like in what I had in my head when we did that project. So what I'm going to do is start a Christmas light fundraising campaign. So what I would like to do, in speaking with Matt Reader that lives on Chesson Street, who so graciously decorates Chesson Street, and there was so much feedback last year. And, um, and it does, it just makes Chesson look so beautiful when you have you there with the lights and the garlands. So that's what I would like to see on Market Street and Front Street. It's going to brighten up our town. Uh, so I'm looking for, what my thought was, is that, um, have citizens and businesses sponsor a pole. It's about $15 for the lights and garlands for pole. I'm gonna ask for $20 so that way we still have some money in reserve to continue this going. This will be an annual thing that we'd like to do. Folks can do one in memory and honor and whatever. Um, and then $20, I'll put a little tag on that pole that says this was, you know, donated by the Miller family or, you know, whatever. Um, that also helps. We do have folks, um, being in the parking lot at Christmas time. I do hear that feedback. We have a lot of people that come into Sunbury from out of the area, and they specifically come here because of the deer. They come here because of, um, and they do shop here, believe it or not, even though people say there's nowhere to shop in Sunbury. But, and I know our other folks in the city are working on that as well. So that's something you're gonna see. The Santa House also, um, Santa House needs rewired back. Uh, that cord that they put on there, um, it's just not, there's a problem. When I turned on the heat and the lights went out. We have an electrical problem in the Santa House that needs to be fixed. So I do believe I found a contractor because I did have to close the Santa House three times last year because I had no heat in there. It was very, very frigid in there. So we're saving the Santa and his claws and, and children, and we don't wanna do that again. So this contractor stepped up and said he would do that. So that will happen. Um, so just some of those things that are going on. Um, the only other thing I do ask as Light Fest is when I'm great, people wanna put up decoration and add to what we're already doing. I just asked that I too am informed because last year, this wonderful, beautiful tree was put up down front, Front Street, and I had no clue where it came from because it was Light Fest. Okay? Not that I was gonna stick anything there, you know, but, um, I just need to know what's going where because I do wanna keep adding. Um, one of the things that are favored in the park is the deer that are lit up and people can put their face through. On, uh, Pedro Reyes and I are working together on, he's going to make a stand-up, um, very sturdy. Um, because our deer did fall over last year and got injured. No, they weren't injured, but they kept breaking. Um, so I have to, we had to fix that because of the wind, it knocked them down. So we're going to have these really sturdy wooden things. We're gonna light them. So it could be, maybe it's gonna be the branch, maybe Olaf, Santa, Mrs. Claus, different things because people love it. I love it when I go by there and people are taking pictures and spending time in the park. Uh, we'll keep the deer going. It's unfortunate. I'm grateful for the farm that brings them, but those deer are not coming. Okay, so I'm just, I'm just letting you know, um, I, you know, I have to move very slow when I go in there because they, and if, no, no deer bark, and they bark at me every time you go away. But, you know, we'll continue with that. Um, and, uh, the number ones, so graciously, we'll continue to sponsor them. The Good Will Sons Co. is company will sponsor the feed and the straw for them. Hey, I say it wrong three times, whatever it is. Um, so, and we're going to add more, we're gonna add some deer, uh, to Front Street around the tree. So we're gonna see more things added. Now, with that said, folks want new things for the poles. I know Lori and John, they want that beautiful lighting that used to be stretched across the street. Just one pole, just one pole, those Christmas trees that are out there, it's $10,000 for one thing, one pole. So to put something across, I'm, I'm not joking. So to put something across Market Street, one, we'd have to get Penn Dock Cove or whatever. I know, I remember that when I was a kid. But to put something like that across, that would be saved and sturdy onto the poles, you're talking almost $60,000 for one to go across the street. So I hear you. Unless you can find me some offshore counts, it's not gonna happen. But adding that white lighting and that garland to the, to that. So with that said, that's where I need the city's help with that because PDW does a great job. Um, and unfortunately, we can't get the prisoners from the state prison anymore. Um, unfortunately, because of activity that has a curb in our city, which we can understand. So we will be looking for volunteers to help because it's gonna be a little bit more than usual. But we'll figure that out when we get closer to November. So. I think that's it. Parades all the same, all that construction. So. Any questions for me? We did, so with that said, we did get one grant, uh, I think it was the buyer for 2004 events, and that includes the ugly sweater party at the grand. Now, my other question is, when, because my name's on the list for grants that weren't the, uh, the after paperwork wasn't handed in, which is not true because I did hand it in. So when I have to get a grant, because I now have to do my paperwork all over again. Because I, I have it at home. I save everything that I type up. So all I have to do is print it. But now I have to go through all of receipts, which the treasures office can't get to the receipts, but I'm gonna have to dig through and make copies. So just so you know. But my concern is, is that when I do my final report, who am I supposed to give that to? Who's it go to?
I guess who signs off on, I mean, I guess I know that I sign off on certain ones, Eric signs off on certain ones, so I'm not particularly sure who signs off on, if you're first out, just.
Victoria, I would submit it directly to the foundation and file a copy with the city.
Okay. Because I'm on there for three, which has me upset because they were done and brought in. Before I was told to bring it into the city clerk's office, and that's what I was doing. And they're back from twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three that are not taken care of, which they were because I submitted them. So I will take care, I'll bring a copy into the clerk's office, and then I'll make sure the foundation's getting it from me that I never let it happen. But, so you know, I am working on redoing them, but I can't get to the receipts right now with the construction. So as soon as that's available, we'll take care of that.
And Victoria, did you put, uh, the application to Steve and Dot for the closure of?
I have them at home, actually. I, I did.
I know you mentioned it, not in general, I, if he has, they're down, this shit, I'm wondering why he's asking us to ask.
Yep, I saw them. I'm on it. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Alright, uh, moving on to old business. There is no old business, but there is new business. So for the one agenda item that we added, uh, Councilman Barnard, I didn't know if you wanted to speak on that, the, uh, Hailstone Economics, the zoning ordinance, or you just wanna add it?
Yeah, I feel still, Mr. Backer, you might have a brief. So, um, one of the issues that we have is reuse of some buildings within the city that are honestly hard to reuse, uh, because of the former uses and the zoning and current ordinances that kind of, uh, are, uh, inhibit the reuse, uh, and add some specific hurdles that are problematic for that, uh, reuse of the building. Um, so we went to an economic company, uh, Hailstone. Um, they come with a lot of experience, a lot of DCD, uh, former DCD individuals. They've done, uh, work in Hazelton, Reading, uh, Quisttown, uh, a lot of Columbia County, Lizard County, North Hampton County, and Freemanburg. Um, so they actually suggested a reuse ordinance. Uh, they said they could draft it for us with our help, of course, our input and Solicitor, uh, Police, uh, walk us through the processes of zoning, zoning ordinances as far as getting amended or passed in general. It's new, it's very, uh, tedious. Um, and then also have meetings with us. Um, so, uh, it would be between twenty-six hundred and three thousand dollars to get all of that done. Um, so, uh, I'm looking to get a vote, uh, to have a vote with Hailstone to, uh, do this in, uh, to a maximum amount of three thousand dollars. The money, um, wouldn't come from anybody's specific budget because we have money for the commercial property inspection ordinance that the whole purpose of those, uh, funds that come from those, uh, inspections is to go back into projects like these to get buildings reused.
But isn't that money, so I know a portion of it goes to NEIC and a portion of it's already calculated into our budget, so you're telling?
It's not, it's not.
I know, I mean, I remember a treasurer, I mean, I'm sure the controller, Alex, is like, hey, the money that we brought in, obviously that's for down the road, we have to reimburse NEIC when they go all, you know, it's a three-year process. So the money being put aside does not go to them?
So there's a portion.
A portion that goes to them, and a portion that?
It's fifty, if, I believe it's fifty dollars.
Out of every two hundred?
Something, uh.
It's two hundred for an inspection?
Have a, have a look at fees, have a look. If it's two hundred for every inspection, then it is, I think it's one hundred fifty goes to them and fifty goes to us.
Yeah, so we, so you're telling, so you're telling me, we, out of every one that we did, we put aside the fifty dollars for each one that wasn't included in our budget?
According to what we're in, it says, not, and I, and we, we had that conversation in there. It was, it's supposed to be earmarked separate, that is not.
But is it? Isn't earmarked?
My understanding, that's how it was done.
What, what I'm saying, but is it in there? Because if, things should be earmarked, doesn't mean it is. I think before we vote, to make sure we have the money earmarked in there for, that we have three thousand dollars before like, oh, sorry, we don't have three thousand dollars, we gotta find it now. I mean, do you know for sure from, obviously the treasurer's done it in a month. Nate, do you know if there's three thousand dollars in there or not?
No.
So I, so I say we, we can't vote on it before we actually know there's money there. That's just my opinion, it's up to the rest of the council, but if we don't know what's in there for sure, how can we vote to say, hey, let's do this, we don't even know if the money's there?
Uh-huh. Did the treasurer tell you to be earmarked the money, so?
Yeah, we talked about it during the budget process, that was correct.
But the director of the department doesn't even know if it's there, huh?
Well, I mean, I know, budget, I just wanna make sure it's in the actual plan.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. I think, I mean, does it happen, you voted on tonight, or can it wait till the next meeting?
That's, uh, council.
I mean, is there a timeline on this, what I'm asking?
I'd like to get one, because it's a script, but this is, you know, the process we need so we can get us to get it back online.
No, I get it.
How about we do it this way? We vote on it, if the money isn't there, then we stop right there because that's being figured out by someone.
Put that part.
Yeah, that's fine. Now, like, will this all get done for three thousand dollars? Not like, oh, hey, we ran out of time, hey, we need more meetings, so hey, another three thousand dollars? Cause, I mean, do they know what they're biting off before they get into this? Cause it says, you know, it breaks it down how many meetings there are for X amount of dollars and so on and so forth?
So, uh, it would be, as far as the proposal would go, it'd be one through three?
No, no, I get that, but I'm saying.
I'm just saying the optional meetings of, of four, when we, when we need it.
No, but I'm saying, like, if we hit that three thousand dollar mark, like it says, you know, approximately four hours for this price, six hours, five hours, what I'm saying. If we hit the three thousand dollar mark and the job isn't done, what do we do? If we go, hey, we're gonna blow another three, not, we're gonna spend another three thousand dollars? Or hey, when we get done with three thousand dollars, this fight, we're wrapped, it's over?
I think we're, we're back to the safety. We have three thousand dollars allocated for this job. Can you do it for three thousand? They say no, then we go back to, done.
Okay. So you put that in, break that form of motion.
Form of motion is, I'll allocate three thousand dollars for the project, number one. Number two, if you go back to the, uh.
Finance Department.
Finance Department, finance three thousand, it's supposed to be earmarked. If there's anything false through, we're done until next council.
That works. And from that, you see where it has actually earmarked, not just saying it's earmarked?
Yes, and one more thing, of course, our Solicitor asked if we do it before.
Of course, yeah. Questions anymore? I will second his motion.
Barnard?
Yes.
Martina?
Savage?
Yes.
Easter?
Roche?
Yes. Uh, moving on, Mr. Backer, Lurda.
Uh, so, uh, we got our first, uh, Lurda application for Local Economic Prioritization Tax Assistance Act on this Lurda three seventy Market Street. Uh, they're gonna be doing renovations, interior alterations, existing building, new plumbing, electrical, HVAC, sprinklers, installation of new kitchen, bathroom, outdoor parking units, and what brings out. Um, each taxing body, this whole district, the county, and us have to agree to this. It's just a tax requirement, uh, for over seven years for the new assessed value once the proper, uh, once construction is done. So year one is a hundred percent waived for the new, uh, assessed value if it was as low as the original. Um, so you get the original taxes, and then seventh year, um, is fifteen percent, eighth year is a hundred percent. So I just would need to vote to accept this application, and then the, uh, other taxing bodies will have to approve this one.
Questions anymore?
Only comment, once again, Old County voting coming back online, Oscar coming back online. We're just lighting it in.
Alright, I'll make that a motion to accept for three seventy Market Street for the Lurda application, that's second.
Barnard?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Easter?
Savage?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes. Keep moving on, Mr. Backer.
Um, the pardon, Safe Street, or DOT Safe Streets grant, um, the Blueprints Community, Community Blueprints Group, I always get it mixed up, um, uh, wanted, wanted to bring this up. So Jody, did you wanna talk about it at all? Would you want me to?
Um, you could, you could do it, Derek, I'll fill in if you miss anything.
Okay. So, um, uh, Nancy Kramer from CityCog, uh, brought this to our attention, that there is a grant out there for Safe Streets, Shavokan just went through it. Um, and basically it's creating a plan, uh, within the city, uh, that looks at crash data, so whether it's pedestrian related, vehicle related, um, and is there a way that we can have better sidewalks? Is there a way we have better, um, pedestrian signals? Is there a better signage that we can add? Is there a crosswalk that could be better? Is there a bike lane that we can put in that would, you know, help things along? Um, is, are there visibility issues, um, that we need to work on with, uh, shrubs and things of that nature? Um, it takes a look at a lot of different things. Um, the cost of it would be two hundred thousand dollars. There'd be a twenty percent match, which is forty percent. Uh, Jody, I'm sure I missed something that you can talk about, so if you would like to fill in anything?
So this is part of the, um, five-year strategic plan, is to ensure that we have a walkable community and that people are safe of walking along. And just a couple of things that Kurt brought up this evening would fit into that category. The, the, um, ways for people to get from the different schools into the downtown. So one of the things that, projects that we're looking at right now is some improvements in Stro Alley. One of the challenges is that there isn't a very, um, good and safe way to, uh, cross Woodlawn Avenue from the municipal parking lot. There are some challenges there with visibility, with ADA ramps and such. And so when we look at wanting to make improvements to Stro Alley to make that a better used place, we also have to look at the safety and how do, how do pedestrians, how do people get to it? So this Safe Streets for All grant is an excellent way for those kinds of, um, pathways and walkability would be assessed, and then identify projects that would be, um, needed and prioritize them.
So we're just applying for the grant, correct? We don't need a penny money upfront or anything?
You would have to agree to a manager, whether it's us, whether we go to a different entity, whether another entity says yes, there's still need to be a match that's part of the application. That is twenty percent, so twenty percent of, towards two thousand, forty thousand.
So we would come up with forty thousand, or some phrase, find forty thousand to apply for the grant? I mean, if we get two hundred thousand now, Kurt. So we're?
Well, we need that source priority of the application we're trying to get.
That, that would be?
Yeah.
So I think you ought to.
Find the match first before we apply for the grant?
Took the idea together, but yes, find the, uh, forty thousand, then we'll, with the grant. What do you think you know with forty thousand?
There, there's some money that is potentially available that, um, Jamie and I talked about. That will uncover the full thing, but there is some money that is left over from City Art Book, um, that is interest-based.
So how much, so how much is needed, is if it's not all?
It would be about half, so at least she said twenty thousand, so we would have to still have a hundred.
It doesn't need to be done now, we have time to actually look to see if we can buy so much first.
So unfortunately, um, the application suit, twenty-six.
Oh, sure.
Yes.
Well, like, you can't find twenty thousand dollars in three days. Like, that's unrealistic.
So, it's.
Unrealistic? Let's just be honest. Like, how long, I mean, when did, how long do we know about it? I mean, I mean, the grant?
So, I mean, I'll go back to the email, but, uh, it was brought up, let's see, how long ago? Week ago? Did the email?
Yeah, it really, it was in the last week or two.
Yeah.
I mean, unless someone wants to be kind enough to allocate twenty thousand dollars out of their budget for it.
Is this something you can put in a file, like, next year?
Yeah, the, the, this comes up in the mail. Um, so, you know, this is something that you can look at for the future. It doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, this year in order, we never get it. That's something we can do.
I mean, considering I doubt we're gonna find twenty thousand dollars in three days, I think we should, alright, keep it for, keep it in mind for next year because, I mean, unless anyone wants to be the, the nice, kind council person, say, hey, I'll take it out of my budget. Alright, I have the safety tape, I mean, I said, anyone else any comments? Alright, I have the safety tape, but it's a later date thing. Opposition to that?
I should find twenty thousand, that's for days.
That's why I say I highly doubt that's gonna happen. If we have twenty thousand dollars floating out there, I'd like to know about it.
We'll go out to table right now, we're gonna get it, so we can get it.
Alright, so I made the motion to table the Dot Safe Street grants to a later date, go ahead, a second.
Second.
Barnard?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Easter?
Savage?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes. Change order number eight, uh, Mr. Backer, Councilman Easter, for Siskiyou Avenue.
So, um, change number, change order number eight for Siskiyou Avenue. Um, it is a decrease, uh, this change order for twenty-three thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents, um, due to adjustment quantities. Uh, so, uh, the contract price went down to three million, two hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred nine dollars, seventy-eight cents. So we're actually under our original contract price of three, three million, three hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred eighty-seven.
Questions anymore?
The only comment I wanna make is about this, Siskiyou Avenue's getting closer to being finished now. This is Shane Box, which is done and, uh, the sidewalk has to be placed, it's on the deal, it's, it has to through there.
And they're, and they're covering those costs, correct? Who's covering the cost of those?
Well, we're still, that's what the meetings about, so we're discussing it. But on Sulu, they're not covering the cost of contract because it's made for free, and they're not paying for it.
Well, so who's covering it? So, the stuff on Sulu, so if it gets changed, we'll call it. Does that mean, does that mean he's paying for it, we're paying for it, or who's paying?
We end up paying for it, so it's a super contract.
But why we end up paying for it? We didn't do the work. I mean, we, I mean, they did the work, we didn't do the work, so why are we paying for it to make it right?
Well, because you did none of the work for free.
Well, I'm saying, but if he did the right, if he did the work correctly the first time, he wouldn't have to do it a second time. So why are we paying for the work if it doesn't, wasn't done correct? That's just the question.
Well, I can't answer that because I didn't do the work, but by saying, okay, big day for position, we done it free. First of all, what happened, wasn't supposed to be done, and you're not satisfied, you know?
That, I mean, that just doesn't make sense, that they, they didn't do the job correctly. Now the city has to cover the cost to do it, the job over again, correct? That, that doesn't make sense. That's like saying, a contractor does a, a job in your apartment wrong, you need to fix it and pay someone else to do it again. I mean, that doesn't, I mean, I don't know, I wouldn't do that, but.
Well, you know the way, look, if we turn around, it's all Sulu, Sulu.
Well, I mean, if a contractor does bad work, why are we telling the citizen to sue the contractor?
Sure, because you made nothing in it. Nothing. It was between the contractor and Sulu. We weren't, we weren't involved in it.
I don't think I understand. So they had a deal that they were getting workplace sidewalks for free?
Yes. Between the contractor and the property owner.
So then why are we getting involved in it?
To make Sulu happy. But if you don't want to, I'll, I'll sue up tomorrow.
No, I'm just saying, it, it.
Take the Thursday meeting.
I'm just saying, it just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, I don't understand the entire situation, all the conversations that took place up there between, you know, the city, the Sulu, and the contractor. I'm not aware of them all, but I just say, it doesn't seem right that we're covering the cost of a job that was supposedly done for free, and now we need to make sure the improvements are done on the city taxpayer dollars.
Well, the contractor says it was not wrong for project, and then Sulu brings in his contractor, says it is, or sets the contractor to own the job, so.
Well, then you, then you guys go up and looked at what Sulu was not happy with? Like you and Steve, weren't you guys up there?
Yeah, we all looked it over.
So was, what Sulu is saying, was he correct or incorrect that it was done wrong?
He was correct. I'm saying what he's saying is wrong, like, what's already wrong, okay? The job prior to Sulu paid for, it wasn't satisfying. It's another contractor, okay?
So the, the new portion that was put in front of Sulu's house by GNR Charles?
Correct.
That he's saying is done incorrectly?
He is, yes.
Yes, so are you saying the job was done incorrectly, or was it done correctly? By GNR Charles in front of his house?
I'm saying, well.
Well, no, because I think this is important that we know, like, if it's done incorrectly by GNR Charles, we shouldn't have to fix GNR Charles mistake. But if you're saying it was done correctly, then that makes a different story. I'm just, I, I don't know, I'm not up there doing it, so I'm just asking you guys.
Let's back up. We, the city, have not been in it, so I'm not gonna say it was done right or wrong.
Well, weren't you up there with them when they went up?
Yes.
So what did they say with that? So did GNR, did?
GNR Charles said it's not wrong.
Okay, and Sulu says there is?
Yes.
So obviously there was some type of discussion showing why it was correct versus why it is incorrect. So what did those discussions entail? Like, did Sulu show evidence that said, hey, this is why it's wrong? Did he show evidence of that?
Well, probably going on the contractor's.
So were the other contractor correct or incorrect by his assessment that's saying it was done improperly because of ABC reasons?
I need to go back up and answer the, the second contractor, was it, I, we had nothing in it.
And I think it's important that we know, because I don't think it's right, the city of Sundery is paying for GNR Charles. If it was done incorrectly, that we're paying for their mistake. That's just my own opinion. The rest of the council may do it differently, but it doesn't seem right to me that we're paying for their mistake, whether it was done free or not.
That's fine, we won't be involved in it, because we're not. We won't be involved in it because we're not involved.
But it's our contractor that we approved to do the job up there.
That was the deal between the contractor and SULAF.
Was it a handshake deal or a written agreement?
I have no idea.
Well, I think it's important we find that out.
Well, we're not in it. Why are we getting involved?
I don't know. Because you were up there with Steve when it was going through. Was it this? You were up there with Steve? Yes or no? Because if the police report this thing differently...
That should be a problem. That contractor should be held accountable for that.
Well, I think we should have more detailed reports determines who's paying for what. If the city's paying for anything.
That's why my point is, is that, can you say something, baby?
Oh, I'll wait for public comment. I don't want to disrupt the meeting.
Okay. If we don't have the change order...
No, we didn't vote on it yet because he was talking about what happened.
No, actually.
Can I ask?
We'll go to him.
So they had another contractor come in then? And that contractor is saying, so it's really a contractor versus contractor right now?
I don't know. From what I understand what Jim said, SULAF's saying what was done by GNR Charles is incorrect. And his assessment is coming from another contractor saying, "This is why it's incorrect." I just asked, is what the contractor, the new contractor's saying, is that true or is that false? That's all I'm asking. So if the job was done incorrectly, I'm saying there's no reason why the city shouldn't be paying for anything. But if the job was done incorrectly and Mr. SULAF is not happy with the job, that's a totally different story. My own opinion is, if it's done, we need to know if it's done incorrectly or not. And then, now based off of a whose opinion, it's easy. Is it done correctly or incorrectly? That's my own opinion.
Also, are we invested partying in this agreement at all?
I don't know. Like I said, it was, we don't know because, as Jim's saying, it was an agreement between the contractor and Mr. SULAF. Is that true or is that false? I don't know. It's a handshake. I have no idea what took place. I mean, I think, like I said, I think we have to have more information before we pay.
Let's get this part, we have a whole... I'll bring more information back again here at the Thursday, next month.
All right. Would you make the motion, sir?
I'll make the motion to accept that change order.
Second.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina? Yes. Savage?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes. Moving on, purchase of enclosed trailer for the police department. Chief, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that a little bit, or I can. It's up to you.
Yeah, so basically, we talked about enclosed trailer before. But we recently threw one at the DA's office and... We were, we basically have seized close to about $30,000 from asset forfeitures. The forfeitures went through. Therefore, speaking with the DA, those forfeitures can be used for law enforcement. And since they are our forfeitures, we're looking to go ahead and purchase a enclosed trailer. I've run by DA O'Donnell already. He's on board with taking in front of us the seizure. And then, basically, what we would do is go about, we can also use more money that we have for the seizures to equip them aside and have a full response. Basically, a crime scene trailer. Again, like we said, it's nothing the city has to pay for. I think the city would be paying for will be for insurance on the trailer itself. Other than that, everything should be stopped. The trailer is stopped being purchased. And then, we're also going to have lettering done with the Sumberry Police logo as well as a purchase of seized money from your local vendor. Basically, that's all.
Any questions on that for anyone? I think Chief, when we priced them out from North Point, they cost ours price after everything was said and done was $4800.
It's about $4,800.
Yeah.
Wouldn't stop shop.
So questions, anyone on that? Questions, anyone? All right, so I will make the motion for the police department to purchase an enclosed trailer up to $4,800. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Martina? Yes. Easter? Savage?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes. Moving on, Councilman...
I'm sorry.
Moving on, Councilman Easter.
Yes, part-time help Dylan Young, $15,000.
Second.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina? Yes. Savage?
Yes.
Easter? Roche?
Yes. Keep going, Councilman Easter.
Okay, we have a contract for the skaters, derby vixens. We'll review this and... For this year and of course, '25.
Yeah, and as I said, they have done that in the past. It hasn't been a year, so it says annual renewal, so...
I'll make a motion at this time.
Second.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina? Yes. Savage?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes. Keep going, Councilman Barn, Easter.
The derby vixens done July 19th, August 16th, and then August 30th. They'll have events and they want permission to take and serve alcohol there.
Second.
I think Warren also answered some.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina? Yes. Easter? Savage?
Yes. Councilwoman Martina?
I'm looking for a vote towards the garage contract to serve an insurance.
Questions, anyone? I shall second.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Easter? Savage?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes. Councilman Savage?
I will make a motion for the approval of abstract vouchers for the general fund in the amount $227,019.88. Those appeals in the amount $2,011.49. Private grants in the amount $123,023.47. Payroll in the amount $98,322.66.
Second.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina? Yes. Easter? Savage?
Yes. And then on to the two other additions. So I'll make the motion to accept Councilwoman Martina's resignation from City Council. Do I have a second?
Martina? Easter? Savage?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Barnhart?
All right, and following that, I make the motion to appoint Citizen Lisa Martina to the position of City Treasurer effective July 1st. Do I have a second? No. No, she's not. I appreciate she...
Savage?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
And then, with that being said, we will be accepting letters of interest to fill Councilwoman Martina's remaining term of council. Letters may be turned in to the city clerk's office. Attention, Jeff or...
Deadline, yeah.
Oh, the deadline to apply would be July 11th at 4:00 PM. Then following would be the first meeting in July. You'd have a work session where we would hold interviews. People, it's open to the public, they may attend. But council will be answering the questions. The citizens can just listen to the interviews. And then we'd go into executive session. And then later in the regular meeting, come out with a decision. We'd probably have to do a little bit sooner because of... Well, I guess it depends how many people turned in. Then we can advertise if that's a go sooner or not. I mean, if there's only like two or three, 5:00 PM, sorry, fine. If there's 10, so maybe more time. So we, I guess that'd have to be determined on the meeting. We can advertise that.
We'll do it when we get a little closer. See how many we get, like, a fourth. We'll see how many we get by then.
All right, and then we'll put that online in the newspaper. All right, so moving on to announcements. Music in the Park for June 24th is being rescheduled to later in September due to the high temperatures. SRI's Moving on the River is Thursday, June 26th at 6:00 PM at the Ample Theater showing the Book of Life. Summer Reading Folk Party at the Dagenstein on July 1st from 12 to 3:00. Music in the Park Tuesday, July 11th, 7... Excuse me, July 1st, 7:00 PM to 8:30. Sumberry City Band performing. Summer Reading Project at the Dagenstein Library on July 2nd from 12 to 3:30. Music in the Park on Tuesday, July 8th, 7:00 to 8:30. Sumberry Celebration will kick off on Thursday, July 10th with the Family Fun Night at 5:00 PM at the Oklahoma Playground. Friday, July 11th is a Free Summer at the Sumberry Pool from 7:15 to 9:15. Also, from 7:00 PM to 9:30 PM will be free live music. Saturday, July 12th, the Sumberry Celebration, which will start at 10:00 AM. Fireworks starting at approximately 9:30. The rain date will be Sunday, July 13th. The Tata Tchaat at the Chicago League All Sports Complex on Saturday, July 12th at 8:00 AM. The next city council meeting will be on Monday, July 14th at 6:15. SRI Moving on the River will be July 1st at 6:00 PM at the Ample Theater. Back to School Movie Night at the Goodwill Playground on August 9th. Let's not talk about back to school. It's too early.
That's way too like sad for us. I'll be returning that.
I know. Don't mention it. From 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. All right, any announcements, Councilman Rice?
You will have camel rides for children for all six of the seven.
All right.
Self-salvation, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
So I think you made the motion for Lisa to take over Treasure July 1st. Should be June 30th. Is his resignation on June 30th?
Oh, I thought it was done like June 30th. It's his last day.
On the 27th, his last day.
Oh.
Isn't that when he put in for Friday?
I just don't want us to be out without treasure for a day.
Will take effect on June 30th. So I was asking you, done. I'll just, to be safe, I will rescind the vote to change it to June 30th. The effect of Councilwoman Martina will have to re-vote. So I make the motion to have her take office on June 30th. Do I have a second?
Easter?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Any other public, I mean, any other announcements, but Chief?
Also with these, the announcement that you've made, I'm going to speak for the Dagenstein, but I'm sure they don't have a lot. But also with the city grounds, we're going to have the law of the police. So it'll be two officers vacated in each of these. It's basically events that are going on throughout the city.
All right, thanks, Chief. Any other announcements from anyone? All right, now at this time, is there any public comment? Any public comment at this time? I'm starting from front, we're coming back. Go ahead. Please state your name.
Victoria Williams. So as you said, Music in the Park, I want to thank Music Culture Supply Company, the new business coming to the market street. They donated money, the Sumberry Boost donated money, State Sumberry Forum Beyond donated money, and private donors. There was a grant that was put in. There was a question about that. Anyway, grant was put in. So if that grant money is approved, we will move Music in the Park through September, the end of September, since we saw it. Okay? And Robin and I are working on that. Yeah, one thing Robin, we talked about was adding a food truck, local food trucks to each of these events. So my question is, parking that food truck, do they have to park it at the Roundabout? Or could we park it right outside of City Hall?
It's whatever...
Only because I know our elderly folks...
Yeah, we can park out.
Walk all the way down to the Roundabout.
Yeah, I mean, parking at City Hall is fine. That's not an issue. I just, yeah, I would either A, make sure they get their own, of course, parking, or B, I don't know how many spots they would need, but, you know, cone it off for, you know, when City Hall's closed at 4:00. You know, the night off just having, cone it off so it means the spots are there.
Okay. I just, and I'll make sure that they're serving...
Sidewalk, sidewalk side, yeah.
Street side, so that they have the back end. Thank you, Chris. And we have food trucks set up all over. Fireworks, WAP. Saw come across my phone today. The fireworks, they have the wrong day. My phone has been blowing up all day asking you when the fireworks are. So I don't know who fixed, WAP got it themselves. But I might want to shoot them an email and say, "Please update that to the 12th" because it says the 10th, which is the first night. So I think they might have misread something. But so I've been correcting everybody all day. But just want to let you know in case you're getting lots of phone calls. So the... Oh, back to the motorbike thing. Did they ever do, I know this was talked about like years, two years ago maybe, when we had all those four-wheelers being ridden in the backyard up on Red Street. Did you ever do an ordinance for, you know, riding for those things in the city?
No, I think we just... I mean, I know the chief, if they see him out riding, they will cite them. But I don't think we ever pass an ordinance to...
Well, only because, and fact, and fact of the matter is, because yards weren't as big as, you know, people now buying the person next door. And you couldn't really ride in the yards back then. So I don't know, I'm just...
What, what you're on that, just so you're aware. I know our guys with patrol orders, if there is an ordinance in place, we can then seize the patrol order. We just seized a dirt bike that was brand new. We only had it for two hours. We started on the road, you know? It was an $8,000 bike. We seized it and basically get the proceeds from that bike.
To fund our next enclosed trailer.
So that's just my suggestion because I know, I see it a lot. I see down there on Wall Street, you know, coming up there off the bike, you know, the riding down there. I see them all over town. So I almost hit one in Snap on Wall Street one day. So it's a game of flying up and down. And so, Mr. Barnhart, you had spoken at meeting that I wasn't able to get. You had brought up about the support unit for the fire department. And I did follow up with the chief. And I followed up with Derek Ferrari in reference to the Chicago Lummy kiddos. We don't want to, we don't talk about that project and possibly getting that going once the, we want to wait until the consolidation's done before we throw anything else in the mix because that's down there to be approved. But Derek and I were going to sit down and come up with a plan. We thought it would be a great thing for the kiddos in that club to help with that. Now, we don't want to deter them from doing the fire part of it. But maybe there's kids that would join it to help and support it or something like that. So just letting you know that's more of a plan, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? Chief?
It's not a public comment, but I would like the announcement to be made. Maybe you can also put it in the paper or on the city website. We can fire fireworks, so we can fire what to the city. So we've had fires every year for the last few years. We've had houses catch on fire. So we are going to...
Chief, either, either fire chief or regular chief, please. Can you send what you'd like to have posted online? So that way we can put exactly your guys' wording, how you want to have it up there. That way we can do it, you know, coming right from your guys' mouth, either from fire chief, Jay Long, or team chap, whichever.
Yeah, because we've had incidents every year for the last...
Well, it's not set up on...
All right, we're taking that guy back.
What, what was...
We're busy enough.
Burning in the, I know this was, you're doing something with this because of you having the fires up, with people having the burn rings. Or where is that? Was that changed about fires and yards in the city?
No, the ordinance was, actually, it's my council. If it was up to me, I would totally eliminate it because we had so many problems.
You cannot homemate because they have to be scored on.
That's up to council.
Commercial.
Commercial, right.
I always wasn't sure because again, I get asked.
You can't just get a tire ring and throw it down.
Okay, I just wanted to be able to tell.
We had for sure, I believe, I had nine incidents documented that was actually close to a house fire back. The last one where we blew the yard and the car. I mean, I don't know of any other third-class city that allows it. So, but that's my opinion. You know, I support the ordinance for what they want. It was up to me, I would have put it in, I'll tell you.
Any other public comment at this time? I adjourn this meeting.